I wanted to give a quick update as to where we're at on the project in the housing. The project is moving along very nicely. I don't know if anybody said a chance to go out there, but we've broken ground. We've cleared the brush and we got approval this week to begin construction. And then on the housing side, I know that's what's truly important for everybody here. The two different projects that they're working on, one is the SEMA homes and the other one is off of Jackson Street. So there's 14 homes, 12 homes at Jackson and 23 homes that are already under contract to be built for both of them. So our contract with the city was 30 homes or 60,000 square feet, well, 60,000 square foot was the target of 30 homes. So rooftop wise, we're going to be building 35 homes total for the Phase One Tax Abatement Agreement. And yes, thank you. We have some just quick presentations as to some of the layouts of the houses that will be built. And if you share this with the council itself, I just wanted to show the general public through as to the home layouts and designs that we were looking at. The SEMA homes have already broken ground on some of those, but it's all moving forward very nicely and we just wanted to confirm to the community that, you know, that we are holding the bargain on the housing and it's already broken ground. And we're looking forward to moving forward on Phase Two. Do you want me to go on to Phase Two real quick?
Sure.
Okay. So we're getting ready to bother you on more. We were hoping to come back for the Phase Two Tax Abatement Agreement soon and we have everything approved on it, other than the airframe, and that's in process right now. And so I'm hoping we'll be on the next agenda for the potential of a tax abatement agreement. And what we'd like to do is essentially roll forward the exact same agreement that we had on Phase One and make life easier on everybody across the board where we come in and build even more homes for the community. So that's all I have. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Eric Stevens. Hi, I'm the Transportation Practice Leader for the Foresight Group. You may have heard our names from your last meeting where you made us the prospective awardee for your Safe Streets for All program. So just wanted to come and say hello. We were in town today. We were at the Water Summit, meeting some of the prospective people. I have a couple of folks with our team here. Doug Stoner, who's our Director of Business Development for the firm, is here, as well as one of our principals, John Rhodes, who runs our West operations for the firm. As you may have heard, Foresight Group is about 20 years old with over about 200 people across 13 offices across the country. My practice in transportation, we do a lot of work in the Safe Streets for All program. We are, to date, have done about eight of those plans for different communities, whether they're counties, cities, or combinations of all those. And so we're extremely excited to be that prospective awardee and working with staff. I'm putting together the actual contract with the idea that we're going to put together a plan that complements what was done with Reeves County, also with Permian Basin Planning Council, as well as being able to get this done in a timeframe such that you will be able to compete for the last round of Safe Streets for All funding that will happen in the spring of next year. So we will be kind of working towards doing that. One of the things I wanted to mention to you and that will be at your next meeting is what we call a Vision Zero Resolution. And for those that do this, what we say is Vision Zero is a noble goal with the idea of eliminating all fatal and severe crashes in your community. And that works through a combination of looking at your policies, your education, how you do enforcement, as well as projects. And we'll be walking through that conversation with staff, your team, as well as coming to council to update you on the progress of that study during that effort. But we really wanted to make sure that while we were here, come say hi, make sure that you see us, know us, as we'll be, you'll see our names, you'll be probably getting a lot of emails and communications from us because it'll be a quick study process where typically these are done in 12 to 18 months periods. We're going to do it in about five. And so we're going to be here every month, having stakeholder committee meetings. We'll have two public meetings to open to the public, as well as some electronic communications. We're going to be putting up a website called Vision Zero because that'll be up probably in the next couple of days that'll start the planning process for the Safe Streets for All. So we feel honored to be in the conversation with this community to work on this plan and we hope to be able to be back in front of council very soon to update you on the progress and work with you on some of the things that you may want to see from a safety perspective that could move the community forward. So I appreciate the time and thank you very much and look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. I did want to say that I think our National Night Out was a great success. We had many, many people out at that Tuesday night. Mr. Lena?
After you're done, Mayor.
Oh, that's it?
Mayor and council, I wanted to put something out there. We have our biannual community cleanup coming about Thursday. And I would like to put the challenge out to all of the boards in town to show up and see who can do the most. And that includes all of our subcommittees and subcommittees. So I think it needs to be, to keep that it's beautiful, it needs to be our council, it needs to be the hot committee, it needs to be to county commissioners. Let's try to get everybody out there on that Saturday. It's right, it's on the 17th, the day before we go to Washington DC.
Eighteenth.
Is it on the 18th?
Eighteenth.
On the 18th, okay. I'm glad you know more than me, Mayor. All my days are combined right now.
We're running together.
But I think, I want to extend it to every single board that the city has as well as to try to put it out there. I am going to have them talk about this on Coffee Clash next week, but, you know, I mean, all of us are very good and we want this place to be better. And I think having enough people that show up from these committees and some of the leadership will do wonders. And we'll be able to get the pictures, we'll have guys out there taking pictures and everything so we can put it on social media and say, "Look, we are proud of this community and we are doing something." A little bit that it does. So I know we have our roll-offs out that same day, so it's going to be, we're going to have our roll-offs out there, so we'll get pictures there too because a lot of citizens use our roll-offs every two weeks. But I just kind of wanted to throw that gauntlet down and say, "Okay, let's see." I'm challenging city staff too, so I don't want it to just be them. I want to have a fun competition if I can. Thank you.
I'd like to extend my sincere gratitude to the entire community, the volunteers, business sponsors, and all who demonstrated their unwavering support at the inaugural Memorial Scholarship Game that we had in honor of Cruz CJ Gomez Jr. last weekend. The family was, they were deeply appreciative of the love and assistance by the whole community that they received. It was a really positive outcome. His legacy will forever be etched into our hearts and unwavering dedication to sports and youth in this community was amazing to see his spirit lifted up there. And I'd also like to thank the council for believing and supporting what we did for that family. That was amazing. Another thing, Chief, wanted to thank your traffic patrol officers for being out there during the mornings and after schools are doing a good job. I saw a couple of stops on 285, so I know they're out there coursing the 20 miles per hour speed limit. So thank them on behalf of me being a parent, taking my kids to school. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, we'll close public comments. We will go on to our consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the September 25th, 2025 regular city council meeting. Review the September 2025 code enforcement report. Review the September 2025 Permits Department report. Review the September 2025 Strategic Plan Report and review the Expenditure Report.
I have some questions on the code. I don't see Holly do it. Cindy's here.
Yes, sir.
Hey Cindy, on the dilapidated fences and structures and stuff, do we have any power to do, get them to do anything besides writing them up?
So there's a process that has to take place prior to, before they start to demolish. So there, I know that Holly already has them working on that dilapidation process. I'm not sure exactly like what, I do know that they file the notices and then they have, I believe, a certain amount of time before they can move forward to the next step.
Is there a list of those?
We do have a list.
Isn't there the grass, you know, I guess the weeds and stuff, like on Texas Street? You know, I guess the owner of the lots or something, or the ones that look like houses on?
So they are, I mean, you look at the notices and they are writing out notices and they do have a certain amount of time to get them cleaned up?
What happens if they don't clean them up?
They get a citation.
Do we take over and hire somebody, a third-party contractor, to clean it for them and then hold them liable?
You know, they get a citation. At this time, we don't have anybody. They'll get a citation for it.
And what happens if they don't mitigate it? Do we have a certain amount of time that we need to allow them to clean it up on our end that covers ourselves as well?
We currently don't have anybody that does it. I mean, we, like, for example, if we end up demolishing on our part, then we'll file a lien on the property. Same thing, I would assume if we did the cleaning for weeds and whatnot, we would file a lien on the property. But I'm not sure that we have anybody at the moment for either one of them.
Yeah, the only option that we have if they don't comply is if we have to do something on it. Stay long, I mean, again, it's always going to be a list of meetings, national lands, and we have to file a hundred dollars. Trying to, when we do the dilapidated structures, those carry a big enough lien where it's something viable. I think if we went and we tried to, we started cleaning yards or weeds, we're hoping that the cannibals that will be able to charge them or put a lien out there for a couple hundred bucks that they could really care less about. I don't think it's going to be sufficient enough to do that. We don't have a lot of options. I know there's some communities that publish notifications like that, where they put the addresses and the names of people up there. We've never done it here, but you know, there's times when sometimes that will carry, will wait, and even find. Trying to clean it, I mean, we don't have enough staff to clean every yard in town for 500 bucks. Some people may think, "It's cheap to get my yard done for 500 bucks."
I guess what I was saying was, we're not, mostly a yard. I see a lot of mesquite trees in lots that are about 10 feet tall, so that to me would be more reasonable to hire a third-party skid steer, somebody that operates a skid steer to go clean it for them and give them the opportunity. Because I've seen some properties on Google Earth and in person, I've been there for longer than two years, I can tell you that. So those are the ones I'm talking about. I'm not talking about grass, I'm talking about mesquite trees that are collecting trash bags flying through the community and they're stuck on these trees and now they look like a Christmas tree with mesquites. So is there a way we could hire a third-party company through our vendor list to let them go clean it after all the, we follow all the guidelines, giving them the citation and they're still not abiding by that?
There's a process that we probably have to get in hand. I don't want them to speak, so I think we need to get more information. I think if we're going to start doing something like that on private property, we're going to have to go through the same process that we did with the populated structures and do it that way in order to get that done. And that takes a notice and they, it takes 16 to 19 days. It's not like it's too long, but it's three months, the notices and everything. It's a possibility, it's something that we can explore, but I want to get you more information.
Can we up the fine?
We cannot.
The 500 doesn't, who regulates that?
Am I right? Parker?
For most ordinances, yeah, it's like a Class C, you can't have more than 500. Certain types, if it's health and safety, they have a higher range, so you can see it. It's just a case-by-case basis.
Who regulates that?
Code enforcement issues the citations.
No, it's the 500, it's a state.
Yeah, that's stable. It's a Class C estimate, there can't be higher than 500 for most types of municipal ordinance violations.
So how often can you give a citation? If you give them a fair warning, then you give them a citation. How long do you give them for until the code enforcement shows up again and issues another citation? I mean, do they have a timeframe, a time limit?
So on Class C citations, we usually get 10 working days to take care of the citation, at least up here before the judge. So if we look at 10 working days, it's about two weeks. And so that's, it means to make contact with the judge. The judge can word, here's the requirements to take care of the citation, whether it's clean it up or how we handle it after. After that, you can continue to cite people and you're going to find a lot of them who either paid a citation or they're going to sit it out in the chair. Because we do have that happen a lot, especially with city ordinance violations.
And you know, it's not that we're trying to be like that, but with the way the town is going, the growth of the community and the new companies coming in and the new people coming in, I mean, it's bad to see that. I know the city has taken the lead on cleaning right there by United and all that area, and that looks nice, but you know, we got other companies that, they don't take care of, the motels don't take care of their own. And they need to, don't they have maintenance staff? It's something that a citation needs to be, a warning, citation, "Clean up your stuff." Just because you come over here doesn't give you the right. I mean, the town is what it is, but we need to push this and, you know, code enforcement needs to start showing up and issue warnings, issue one warning. After that, start, start.
Citation?
Yeah, start giving them citations. Hey, if 10 days they don't do it, go give it, do it again, another citation. I don't know how else more to ask people, clean up. I mean, you know.
Is that why you put more teeth into that? What are other communities doing?
They hire third-party contractors and then how do they recover the, do they put a lien?
We're talking about more than 500 dollars?
No, but they keep, they just don't wait on people. They hire a third-party company, go clean it up. And we're not talking about grass, right? We're talking about mesquites, high bushes, right? Stuff that just stands out, so. They usually just hire a third-party company and then take it from there. They're not going to sit around.
So you're talking about going on somebody's property and part of that is for us, like one person decides, you know, there's a, there's going to have to be a search warrant team, but when you just enter somebody's property, you're cleaning. That's why Cody's saying that the process, you got to go through the gate. And so a lot of times with code enforcement, especially where there's property that has, say, abandoned cars and he becomes a health hazard, you go through a process and it can take months. Some of these things have taken up to years to get on the property because either you can't find the owner or the owner's refusing to go out. So it is a process. You can't just go on this number to property because you should go back. And I know what you're saying about the third-party cleanups, but that's after it's gone through the process.
Chief, I don't mean this disrespectfully, but I am tired of hearing excuses. There's a lot of properties that I could find that I know where to find the people. And I'm talking about churches, businesses, notable people in the community. I mean, it's not hard to just get out there, put some teeth to it and say, "Look, we need to start," I mean, we can't, no more the days of being, slapping on the wrist and being nice, you know? We just need to put some teeth behind it and get, it's something so small that we're just overthinking it. And if we could start showing them that we mean business, then everybody else is going to follow.
Sure, I understand.
And that's not being aggressive or a bully, it's just taking care of a community that has pride.
You know, and that deal that we're going to have for in a couple of weeks, that's a good, you know, the community to come out and work together, all of them, all of us working together to clean up what we can for those four hours that we're out there. But it's, maybe we need to do it twice a year to help them. I, you know, we're helping them out with every month that you put out, is it every month or every quarter?
Every month.
The roll-off. And I know that that thing is working great, so they use it. I use it a lot. I don't need to go to landfill, I can go there, but, and there's folks out there that, they don't have help, you know? But like what we're going to do in a couple of weeks, that's where we come in, you know, because it's a gang of people stepping out and youth and youth organizations that come out and help out. So that's something that we can put out, like when you do that Coffee Clash program, you know, talk about it and that's promoting. But I'm like Hector Karaski, like Councilman Karaski was saying, you know, it's time to clean up the town. I mean, we've got, we've got new stuff coming and the old is dead. Time to change, change our mindset. People don't, might not like it, but that's all right. They don't like change. The changes come, they like it or not, it's coming.
Mayor, did we jump over the minutes? I'm sorry.
Well, they're all in the same, the same year.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
I just, I don't want to just focus on code enforcement. I think, I don't want to badger any department. It's just something that is so simple, is to be in the bad person and nobody wants to be the bad person or ask the hard questions to say, "Look, enough is enough. We've given you a citation, this is the next step we're going to take moving forward." When I take my daughter to school, I've seen a lot of empty lots that are owned by churches and government organizations. I get an app called Landglide and Landglide tells me who that owner is. All I got to do is get on that Landglide and tell you exactly where the owners at. And that's just going to somebody says, "Hey, who represents this organization?" So I could deliver this citation. There's not really much to it.
We have, why do you think?
I know, I know y'all have some kind of software, but I'm just saying for me, as a citizen, right, it's just to be able to say, "Hey, I know who owns this." And the majority of the people, like, I'll finish my statement here, but the majority of the people that are private investors from out of town, like, and I'm not picking on anybody, but like John Lannahan who's from El Paso, that buys a lot of these lots, you know, people like that, we can find them. I mean, I have his number, but, you know, those are the kind of people that are out of towners that we need to say, "Okay, we can't get ahold of them. Does anybody at the appraisal office know their number or a way to connect with them?" It's just getting out there and taking the extra step and the measures to get this place going in the right direction.
And that's normally what we do, to make contact with them.
Yeah, so.
May I make a motion? We approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Graham to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? But the record show the motion carries. We'll go to our non-consent agenda, item F1, Presentation on Benefits Available Through AirMed Care Network for Tana Picas City Staff. This is under Strategic Goal Six, Sound Governance and Fiscal Management. I'll be here.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me again.
Rivera.
Good evening, y'all. So based on the first presentation that we put together a couple of months back, are there any other questions or comments on anything that you'd like to discuss with me at this moment?
Is this for the whole Picas Town?
So, yes, sir. So what we drew up was all city employees.
All city employees, right, I asked if I hold town.
Not residents, employees, employees only.
If the county wants to.
Yeah. So we have that agreement with Reeves County that's separate and apart from what's going to take place for the Tana Picas City employees. And I went ahead and included the total number, the figure, including y'all. So that number is 52,800 and that covers three years of domestic folk membership.
So it's not automatic, you have to fill out an application?
I would do a membership enrollment for each employee so that I can cover any questions that they may have because we all know somebody that's been flown out by my company or maybe even to themselves. So a lot of the questions that I get are billing, different types of scenarios, what kind of strategic support we have for calls that are, you know, when our flight crews are dispatched already. So I address that personally. And it doesn't take long.
Don't usually, don't talk to, well, don't talk to Hannah Plon?
We have both types, yes, sir. We have over 500 assets in the US.
Mr. Rivera, when it's a citizen, do you guys incorporate any kind of discounts like seniors, military, anything that your company?
So we do have what we call a municipal site plan and it's an agreement between AirMed Care and Reeves County. So we all already receive that discount. Yes, sir. So the figure that you're getting right now, that's because of that discount. As you can imagine, just what one flight would cost.
I guess you can go to mail. It's probably gotten up to 20, 15, mine was $38. Money has to go to the district. They couldn't decide to, they're not too anxious. Did you get the windows? What's the difference between this and what we have with the county?
So this gives you access to the full network domestically as opposed to flights just out of Reeves County.
So this would cover the whole United States?
The entire, yes, sir. Our entire network. And we're actually the world's largest medical transportation company. So we do include international flights that are non-restricted, you know, we're not going to go to Iran or North Korea. So, but I did send over what's called AMI. And so what I propose is, city covers the employees for all domestic coverage and then payroll deduct for AMI. So a scenario would be they're out in Cabo San Luis Obispo, there's a medical event, well, if they have that full coverage with us, we're going to fly them home.
This would be AMI?
Yes, sir. And there's actually two forms. You have the Fly You Home and Emergent and then AMI separate, and that will be for your And I'd like to push further so we can finalize. I can actually dedicate October 15th through the 17th to enroll each employee for the city. That's next Wednesday through next Friday. And if we need another day or two, I don't mind staying home, they don't, I like being there just.
Since this isn't a discussed, consider option, do we have to wait? Because it's just, it's just on our agenda as a presentation.
That's fine.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't know where to find it, buddy.
Yes, sir. Come on over. Thank you. Y'all have any other questions for me? Thank you for having me. Y'all have a good evening.
We'll go to item F2, Discuss, Consider Employee Survivor Benefits, Strategic Goal Six, Sound Governance and Fiscal Management. Margaret, do you?
I want to read a little statement that I prepared to give a little backstory of why I decided to put this specific item on the agenda for tonight. Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the community. I rise tonight to speak on an issue that is deeply personal yet affects every public servant and city employee and their families, the handling of retirement benefits for employees who pass away while still in service. On August 1st, 2025, my father passed away unexpectedly while serving as Reeves County Commissioner for Priesthood. He dedicated his life to public service, earning the trust and respect of his community through years of hard work and commitment. My family is proud of his service, but we were left navigating uncertainty and frustration when it came to his retirement benefits. What my family experienced, specifically my mother, firsthand was the lack of clear communication, guidance, and empathy during an already painful time. This is unacceptable. No family should have to endure additional stress while grieving a loved one who devoted their life to serving others. As a member of this city council, I intend to use my voice and my position to ensure that happened to my family does not happen to another city employee or public service as long as I can help it. We must review, clarify, and strengthen policies so that all employees and their families are treated with the fairness, dignity, and respect they deserve. Our public servants and employees give their best to this community. It is our duty to honor them, even in death. By reviewing our policies and strengthening how we handle retirement and death benefits, we can reaffirm our values, respect, dignity, and gratitude for those who serve in our community. So I brought this up to get some clarification from HR to see what we have in place for... So I brought this up to get some clarification from HR to see what we have in place for retirees or potential retirees that pass away unexpectedly for the Town of Pecos City.
Do we have any answers? I know, I know you're new.
I want to know what we do as a city to protect city employees who pass away unexpectedly with their benefits, bereavement, support, any type of support that we give them.
So the city does have a life insurance policy. So if anyone has passed away while they're currently working with the city, their family are breathing in a, their salary and a half, a year's worth of their salary and a half out of that, that life insurance. And then they also get offered a waiver. So that's a federal law. And they can have that policy up to three years. The only thing with that is it's quite pricey and they will pay everything for cost on that for the three years. So it's full cost, that's the, for the employee would pay plus with the disease portion of it, plus 2% on top of it. But that is an option.
What about retirees and their families?
So retirees, I just spoke with Joe Denton the other day on that. So he said that there is an option for us to add a retiree plus onto our insurance where it wouldn't affect our premiums at all. And this would allow any employee that retires under the age of 65, they can keep into the insurance until they are 65 and they're eligible for Medicare.
Other than that, Cobra is the medical insurance and the life insurance are plated in there. Both of them?
Just the medical.
Yeah, the actual medical insurance.
Council has, it's up to one and a half times salary with a cap of $2,000. There's no questions. I'll make the motion that we approve resolution 25-10-02R. I'll second. Karasko seconds.
Have a, have a motion from Councilman Sedonia, a second from Councilman Karasko to approve resolution 25-10-02R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. We'll go to item F5, discuss, consider resolution 25-10-03R, a resolution approving a blanket purchase order for fiscal year 2025, 2026 for water and sewer department, strategic goal six, sound governments, governance and fiscal management. Calvin Mitchell.
Good afternoon again, mayor, council. Kelvin Visser, Director of Public Works. What you have in front of you are the blank appeals for the water and sewer departments. Again, this is also a budgeted item.
Any questions? Mayor, I make the motion that we approve resolution number 25-10-03R as presented.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Torquio, a second from Councilman Arona to approve resolution 25-10-03R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Thank you. Item F6, presentation on the commercial motor vehicle MOU with the Texas Department of Public Safety, strategic goal two, safety and security city, Lisa Toranga.
Mayor, Council, Lisa Toranga, Chief of Police. What you'll see before you, you should have in your package is an MOU that I've been working probably since early May with Texas DPS and the federal motor carriers. And it's potentially where we're going to have a commercial motor vehicle enforcement unit or division, if you will. I have 12 months to get that unit standing up, if you will. Part of the process is going to be certifications. So you won't really see a commercial motor vehicle enforcement unit here until they start getting some of these certifications. A lot of their training is going to be with the CMV unit with DPS in another community. You don't see those a lot out here. There may be some more when they do operations out there. Ector County and Midland County both have a CMV unit that's within their agencies. And part of the process is, this is a federal program, but it's been assigned to DPS for the state of Texas, therefore DPS oversees it. So there's been a lot of talks and negotiating with the DPS attorney out of Austin to get this program or even an MOU in place. The only way that our community is able to have a unit like this is our population for one does a check and then the amount of tax revenue that comes in from the oil and gas industry. Other than that, we would not have qualified to even be a part of this program or every department would probably try to have it wherever you see commercial motor vehicle traffic. So what I ask of you is just to kind of look at the MOU, see the direction myself and Mr. Reno have been working since early May with this. And just kind of want you to look at the overall cost of what it's going to cost to even stand up the unit. It's going to be a specially equipped vehicle that's going to have the weights, the scales have to be used on these trucks, a lot of different types of equipment for measuring and just a overall inspection. So the recommendation from DPS is initially we're going to get the first four certifications. And again, this is over time that they're going to get that before we have the officer go on and get the next four certifications. And so it is a process, but it's something that we're in the process of, of making it happen and see if it can work.
Do you have your officers picked out yet?
I do not.
Yeah, for volunteers?
I have three out on medical situations at the moment and so we're another four short, so that makes seven total officers that we're down. And, but I do think that we're going to be able to, to find a good fit. I know different DPS people are starting to retire from the CMV unit, so those are possibilities that we may look at. But I, I would really like if we're going to stand up a unit, find somebody who's, according to the DPS, they say you gotta find somebody who's in it. Like you can't just half work the program. You gotta really want to do this because it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work to get the certifications and it's a lot of work to do these inspections.
Chief, isn't this something kind of similar to what I discussed, my second?
We discussed it. Yes, we did.
So we're on the move right now?
We were already on the move then, but it's just once I was able to get with them. So there's a process that you go through with DPS. They don't just say, yeah, come on over. You gotta go through their attorneys. You gotta go through the captain over this division. And I actually had to send them the notice three different times to see if they'd gotten the first two notices.
Now I have a note, chief, from the last meeting that I wanted to talk to you about. So where's the inspection station? I'm sorry, Randy, I cut you off.
Is it a mobile, is it a mobile inspection or is it?
Stationary.
So, so these type of inspections, of course, are going to be stationary. So we have to find a flat surface and it can't be like the Stripes parking lot. It can't be a truck stop parking lot. I got warned on that already from DPS. They said those kind of businesses are not going to allow you to do these inspections on their property. So part of this 12 month deal that I'm trying to work on is find a location where the officer can do an inspection. You know, right now behind our, our police department, there's a nice big cement slab. You know, that may be a place that we use temporarily, but we're not going to have that property forever. So, you know, I, I need to have some visits with the county.
285 would be a good place.
The rodeo.
285. And so my hopes is, you know, maybe the county will say, yeah, sure, you can stop and have a vehicle stopped in, say, the rodeo parking lot or outside of Pody's somewhere right there in that area. Won't be forever, but whenever you put these units out of service, they're out of service. And at times it could be for 24 hours, 48 hours. And so I gotta make sure I have the cooperation of other entities to even allow us to use their property or their parking lot. And so those are going to be some of the dilemmas I think that we're going to find out because ours is strictly going to be what's in, within the city limits. We're not going to follow a vehicle out to Mentone and do it because that's, that's DPS's area. Now, when we're going through the training, you, you may see our units in those areas because it's strictly a training. It's almost like an internship that you do with DPS.
On hands on, you gotta get out there and do it.
So you have to do, I believe the number was 32. Why, that's the number, but you gotta do 32 inspections with a trooper or somebody who oversees the program before you're even allowed on your own to do that type of inspection. DPS will come in and audit, they audit the records, they audit the officer, they audit the inspections. And at any point, they can terminate our contract or our MOU with DPS on those.
How many officers are you looking to get for this?
You know, ideally, Mr. Karasko, it'd be great to have two.
One for the morning, one for the night?
Sure, or later in the evenings, you know, they do some later evening inspections. You know, they say the main ones really, they do a lot in the morning till late afternoon. But yeah, I would really like to have, you know, maybe two at, at least, you know, but it's going to be, I can't have them taking patrol calls while they're doing these kind of inspections because these inspections can go on for several hours, you know? And just visiting with the DPS lieutenant that's kind of in this area, he's giving me a little rundown of what this could possibly look like.
What are the fees on the violations? How much?
So those fees will go again through municipal courts. So I, I don't know. I know that they're a lot heavier than just your, your classy fines because you're really, you're digging these, these businesses or these commercial motor vehicle businesses for the compliance with their vehicles, whether it's defective equipment, defective weights, that kind of stuff, so.
So, so is this log books too or is it just equipment?
No, this could be log books as well. Those are different certifications, of course, that the officers are going to have to go through. And these certifications, they're obtained through training there with DPS CMV. So it'd be sending an officer to Austin for a week or two at a time. Then they have to show proficiency with the certification. Then they have to go out on the street with the, with the trooper, with the CMV trooper.
Are there annual refreshers, annual education every year?
It would have to be an annual certification. So you have to prove proficiency constant. And so it does talk about in the MOU, you'll see where it talks about the yearly certifications. And if you don't do, say, an inspection for three months, they're going to pull your, your MOU in. There would be no reason why we shouldn't do one in three months period, of course. But, you know, it's, it's one way that we can try to start to, to help ourselves with some of the CMV stuff that we do have going on within the city streets. And 285 is, part of it is in the city. It is a state highway, but we have a small portion that is within the city limits.
And with, as we have seen, violation, you're there, you're getting a bigger spot.
It is.
Stay there till there, you're there.
Yes, sir. And there's, I mean, there's going to be a lot to it and I'm not the expert on CMV violations. So it's something that, you know, the officer's going to get certified and trained on. And then my idea is let's train one and maybe that one can enter in the next one, if you will, you know, where you have someone who can help the other new person when they get started.
So we're taking over the DPS or the town like this?
Not really taking over, maybe just adding two because you don't see a lot of DPS CMVs in the city limits very often. You do see troopers making traffic stops, but not all of them are licensed or certified to do these commercial motor vehicle inspections.
Are you gonna, are you gonna have to add more manpower or just the same that you have right now, just train them as they?
I would love to add more manpower. I know we've talked in the past about how many were short. We haven't even talked about how many are frozen. And it's just, you know, we're working with SAVR, with HR, to work with Odessa College. They can't even make a, a police academy make because they don't have enough people attending it. And the smaller academies that you see in this area, they may graduate four or five. They're already, they're sent to an academy by Odessa PD, Midland PD, Big Springs PD and...
They're already spoken.
Yes, they're already spoken for. And so we try to intervene in some of these recruiting events, but they're like, oh no, the other agencies are paying for us to be there. We do have a cadet program as well. Again, we're pulling from our own staff to send off. And so again, we're going to shortchange one division to try to patch another, if you will.
So you're going to make more money on this. It's going to be beneficial to the community when you get your citation. So does that mean this enforcement officer is going to get a bigger salary increase, I would assume?
I wouldn't say a bigger salary increase. It's just going to be a different assignment, you know? But there's got to be some increase across the board with regards to all the officers and what they do. And so, yeah, I mean, we need to take a look at their certifications, what they're doing to, to get themselves certified or I guess prepared for a position like this.
I was a patrol officer and I applied in Vegas right now. What am I starting salary to be?
With no experience, straight out of the academy, $26 a night.
Does that come out to, I could have taken $54,000? So your average CMV officer makes $64,000 as a cheapest one because you have to take this, it's very extensive training. Biggest violations we're going to see in Vegas is at night with your weight limits and that's going to help preserve our infrastructure that we're building, including any street. So you're going to be getting more revenue once, these fines are in the thousands upon thousands shared. Right, so we're going to share this, right?
We have to share this, right?
Okay. So we're still going to see an increase in profit with this and a lot of it's going to be with maintenance as well. I'll subject here real quick, I might allow to discuss, this engine ordinance that we passed this year, when would that go into effect? I would assume, well, all the officers can now. And force that slash, is that against you?
Within ten days.
When are we going to get the signage and all that going?
They call it, you already ordered signs for their offer, there's no one there.
And all your department, including the sheriff as well is on the same page, knowing that we now have an engine brake ordinance?
Sheriff should be aware of this.
For us, our guys do. In fact, I've had people, we specifically mentioned Starbucks, and they sat out there just to march her for about an hour and they only got two within that hour, but it was there, you know? And it's, they heard more of a truck accelerating out of United than an actual commercial motor vehicle, but you know, it was there. It was there. It wasn't as much as we thought it was going to be, at least within that one hour period. But, you know, it's there, you know, in the jet break, you know, in some communities it's probably a lot more than the way you see in ours, but it is, it is visible there.
I'd like to see the increase in salary to get some of the officers motivated, not that they're not, but if they want to get out of comfort zone, get some salary increases because this is a big responsibility, this kind of job. There is so much violations that I'm, I'm very excited for this. So that saves my research time now, no longer can talk about weight limit cameras anymore. You know, y'all could have just told me this a lot down though. I've already researched the weight limit cameras on the flock system and all kinds of stuff, or anyway, long story short, but it's going to be very beneficial. And I, and if you, I would assume that we can put one in the morning and at night because a lot of the nighttime bills are noticed. So it's, if we can work out some kind of partnership with the county, sharing the rodeo grounds, that'd be your ideal location.
What percentage is the state?
50%.
50% goes, you have to send.
We're doing all the work to make a difference.
Yes, sir. Got to talk to our lobbyists.
It's kind of like a he'site changing.
That's a program that they have, aren't they?
Sounds like a bracket.
Can you get that corrected for me?
Sir, and the overweight tickets specifically, depends how much overweight, but the fine ranges on those are, are well in excess of your typical class C. They, last one I had that was between 1,000, 2,500 and they can go high, I think up to 5,000 maybe or somewhere in that range, but it depends how much overweight they are that they just can get pretty happy.
Sure. It's going to be a process. They'll probably even have to have the municipal judge get a little bit of training and education on these type of violations.
And when they do the inspections and they'll print the ticket, they'll, they'll find 20 violations and maybe only give you two or three citations out of it, but I mean, there are all sorts of things that are there, you know, mudflaps, no cap car, improper markings and there's a bunch of things they look for.
And so according to the DPS lieutenant in this area, who will be the one that's going to train ours? Like he said, there may be 15, 20 violations, two citations is all you're going to be allowed to get. Very rarely would they allow three, but it, because it's, it's kind of like you said, the fines are so astronomical that, you know, you could bankrupt a business pretty quick, I guess, if you did all of, like you said, the mudflaps and stuff like that. And it can't be just pull them over for an inspection. There has to be a violation that the officer sees before it goes into an inspection and or, you know, kind of like our train accident here, you know, CMV came out to inspect that truck. There has to be an accident of some sort as well. So there has to be a reason. It can't just be, let's see how many violations we can find.
Let me fill my quota for the month.
That's it, yeah. And, and we don't want to do this. It's not a profit-making thing. It's a safety thing for the community. This is not to, hey, let's generate a lot of revenue, but let's create safety, safe streets for the community.
It's like, like Councilman Karasko said, overweight takes where it's careful.
It does.
Yeah. It just cares about my roads when they're overweight because our roads are made to hold.
Yeah, there's a lot of safety issues that I've seen personally. A lot of it is tire issues, improper cargo securment here in the streets. I've seen that a lot here and defective lights. So, you know, those are the things that, we're not saying we're picking on them, but you're not going to come through the community and have your cargo knocked out properly.
100% agree.
All right.
So it was a process, right? I would have let you know sooner. So we just signed this thing just a few, like not even a week ago.
It saved me a week. Good job.
So you'll see, you'll see, I'm going to come back to you with the cost as far as you can kind of look at it and see, because we're talking about a vehicle, the scales, the equipment, the training, the certification, the hotels, the per diem. So it's gonna, but we got 12 months to make it work and I think we can get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Here we go, on to item F7, update on mobile vendor fees, strategic goal five, promote promote open and consistent communication. Councilman Graham.
Uh, I was hoping more, just an update. I was, I was hoping that maybe we've made a change tonight. Just on that one, one fee, that three hundred and fifty dollars that we charge for, what do you call that one?
For the vendor? For, you were talking for the grooming?
Yeah.
It's three fifty a month.
So I was wondering if, you know, we could scale that back down? But we can't take any action on it tonight.
Okay.
They, they didn't put, this doesn't consider that update, so I guess it's gonna be on the agenda again.
Okay, no worries. I did, uh, put a package together for y'all as far as the surrounding areas for the fees for mobile, itinerants, and peddlers.
Which are the ones, I'm sorry, what are the ones we were talking about? Grooming fees?
Grooming fees is the one that Mr. Orona and Graham were talking to me about in the city.
And I thought you covered a, somebody wanting to go out and, and, um, put a deal out on the rodeo, so he can make some extra money. And, you know, we got people that, not food trucks, but they've got, uh, you know, lemonade stands or whatever.
You're talking about inside the rodeo ground?
Bad in, in the town too. You know, I didn't wanna gouge anybody, you know, just trying to make a, make a, not, not make a living, but just make extra money.
Correct.
What are some of the ones that you get a lot of complaints, complaints the most on?
Honestly, the, it, it's very few that complain. Um, we have several vendors that are, are ten vendors, for example, for food. They come and pay before, they know the requirements. There's no complaint, they come and pay it as it comes up and ready to pay. I really don't get any complaints. The do, the ones I do get are the smaller vendors that set up for like a month, and which is a three hundred and fifty dollar vendor fee.
So can I ask you a question? I've probably asked you this in the past, but how many permits, uh, can we discuss this food truck permits? This item? How many food truck permits can we have in the city limits right now?
So we can have a minimum of, I mean, a maximum of ten.
Ten?
Those are on rental properties.
What if they're not active? What I mean by active, what if they're from out of town and they're just parked there in, uh, maybe a month or two? Is that one?
I don't have any, I don't have, right now, I don't have any that are not active. I have a ten spot.
What's the process if they're, if they're, uh, if they got it parked, but they're not using it? Do they get a fee? Or, 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 let me put it this way. If they get a permit, they pay for the permit, but they don't open up for six months, but they hinder somebody else from opening up because they met, you already gave out a ten, a ten, uh, permit? That's really not fair for somebody just to come and get it and then not put it to use because they're hindering somebody else from coming.
We used to have one like that. But we didn't have anything on the books that says that we can't, they can't have it that way. But we don't have any that are not set up right now. Every, all ten are all in working status right now.
What's your waiting list, right now, give or take?
I don't have anybody on the waiting list. We had four, four openings that came up, and those four came in, and they, they got them.
Think we would ever consider, sorry, catch you on a location. You think we would ever consider mobilizing it just centrally one day?
That would be, that would be awesome to have them all in one location.
We've, we've been about to talk about buying land.
Yeah, just buy enough, buy it all, use the land to put them, centralize them.
That EDC one across where the church was at, would it work out?
Absolutely.
I've never thought about it. It would be perfect.
Because it's, it kinda looks kinda bad on the town when you got a food truck in every corner.
And so we have ten, ten, uh, ten that, that have been rent, with rented property. But all the people that have commercial property can also have one that does not go into account. So we have more than ten.
Yes.
We have ten that are with a limit with rental property. But if you own a commercial property, you can have a truck that does not go into the, the count of the ten.
So like La Fiesta owns that property, so that food truck does account as one of these ten.
And the two that are across the street from La Fiesta flavor?
Yeah, those two don't count. Well, one of them does, because it's, it's rented.
Oh, yeah, the one that takes.
The one to the side, but the one to the back gets property owned. So we don't, we have more than ten vendors out there, mobile vendors.
How does it work if I owned a commercial property? Can I lease out my property to the food truck owner?
If we have a ten, uh, an open spot.
We do.
That we don't.
Could me in the future consider talking about that to where, I mean, there's not many much restaurants besides King Shark, if I'm correct, and La Fiesta, that I've seen old meals, stop if I'm wrong. But so one day incorporate them all in one park and make it a little nice. You know, eventually start putting them centralized somewhere where people can go, listen to live music, have a taste of different varieties, allow future people from Alpine Marfa that wanna come in for the weekend and bring a different flavor besides Mexican food, you know? Thai food, something, you know, different.
But would we have to provide public restrooms?
It would be.
All of that in, in that area?
Yes. So we currently have a, an ordinance on the books for a preferred site. Um, but it does require restrooms, not porta pots. It's gotta have a, a natural restroom on the property.
So we would buy the property, build the restrooms, and make a profit. And also make the town look pretty. Plant some trees, put some string lights at night. And you'd be surprised how many people wanna bring their food trucks to Pecos.
But we've had noise complaints on trailways, so now you're putting a food court in the next block, and you've got neighbors around there, and there's gonna be noise. So we may have to think about that.
You wanna look at the example, Fort Stockton, for you, or, or, or in some length, or, or Stockton, or something like that? Just, if you wanna have that in view.
We'll eventually find another piece of land. So at the, at the end of the day, we can't please everybody.
Correct.
I mean, we gotta think in the majority and what's, what the direction might go in the future. And there's places that you go that are so small, and you're like, man, this is cool. They got their own food truck park. It might be eight or ten, but it's different.
And we do get a lot of people call in to find out if there's any openings that they call regularly.
What about the actual park?
We've talked about this for a while, but it just hasn't happened. The land I've set to the museum. Cause I know that Odessa does, like, once a month, they get together a bunch of food trucks like in the parking lot of, of Sam's or, or Walmart, and it's just, just people walking in there, you know? Maybe we could start it like that to start promoting it, if we wanna do something like that. Because as the many trucks and, and, I like, that's what, uh, Barack said, you know? The sound is about Mexican food. But I like, I like getting variety. You know, I like to, I like to try something else different. And, and when you open it up and stuff like that, it's Mexican food or barbecue, and...
Chinese too. Got a couple Chinese editing.
Yes.
Um, okay, so, so somebody looking at, or, or somebody that goes out to the rodeo ground, they're gonna have to pay three hundred and fifty dollars?
Cause it's over, over three days. Cause it's over three days. So anything under three days, um...
Seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars, and then anything over that, it will be three fifty. For three days or more.
And then, um, the mobile, the food mobile vendors, it's pretty expensive. Three hundred and fifty dollars for my, thirty-five, three thousand five hundred per year, which is...
And believe it or not, Mr. Graham, they do not complain on those things.
Oh, really?
They do not. I mean, they're here, about right now, they start renewing so they don't lose their spot through the following year.
They bring in a lot of sales.
And what is that, ten?
Mm-hmm, those.
And, and when you, you have a truck like that, they, uh, you, they get inspected and all that, right?
Yes, they do. And they have random inspections as well. They get the initial to, to start, and they have random inspections throughout the year.
Cause I was looking at the other towns that, how they, you know, the limits they should put together. And, uh, you know, we may sound expensive, but they, they don't have what we have.
They don't. And I, I mean, a lot of these fees, like I was looking at, Midland hasn't, uh, updated their food, their food, uh, mobile food vendor fees since nineteen eighty-three.
Oh, my gosh, wow.
Um, Odessa since twenty-twenty. The ones that are the closest to us is Fort Stockton. They recently called us and asked for what criteria we have. They recently updated, if you look, they're comparable with our fees.
Like everything else, everything goes up. But if they haven't done this since nineteen, whatever, eighty-three? Well, they got plenty of restaurants anyway, so, the variety, the variety. And you know, I'm sorry, Randy, go ahead.
Somebody comes in once a month, requests a month, what are they gonna have to pay? Hundred fifty dollars? Seventy-five dollars per day?
Yes. But they usually, I don't really have, the only time that we have, like, the daily ones are maybe like the, the vendors that are going door-to-door, like Solar. The rest of them are usually paying by month. They pay the monthly fee.
Even like the Fort Stockton line, when they set up, they're in the park. Do they pay?
So we don't, we don't charge a fee for that.
Oh, they don't, okay.
And then speaking to Mr. Graham, um, from earlier times that we've spoken about this, if there's any kind of event going on, a fundraiser, medical fundraiser, anything that's going on, if it's local people, I don't even charge a permit fee. But we do get a fee, a permit done because we wanna inspect it and make sure that, that it passes inspection. But they don't even pay fees for that.
A lot of people send them out of their homes, I get it, but we...
They're not supposed to be selling out of their homes, so, I mean...
How do you guys deal with that? When you see a Facebook ad and somebody's selling food, how do you deal with that?
Really, there's nothing that we can do. It gets, it can get reported to the controllers, and the controllers will come and audit.
I'm trying to write it down.
We don't, but it's not allowed. Like, if we do find out somebody and they do put an address, our, my girls will try to make contact with them and tell them that it's not allowed, that they need to be in a commercial property, but they still do it.
I agree, so.
Mr. Lino, the, that pocket by the rodeo grounds, that little small piece of pocket that's for sale? Have you seen it between the hotel and the rodeo grounds that's for sale?
But, you know, she should fall under one.
I was wondering, like, if we ever consider any of that in the future, we would find something up to it and find that would benefit, you know, and try...
You're gonna get the most volume, you're gonna be, you're gonna be, you're gonna be specific. You're gonna be the only piece of luggage that's...
But then, yes, the one by Starbucks?
Oh, I think, yeah. The EDC's working on it.
I don't know if it's too smart, too big, but that, that, that something be cool for the city, you know?
I think what we have, would have to also consider, Councilman Frost, is if we do put something over two eighty-five, throughout the day, I think we would have to get a large enough piece of property to accommodate large truck trough, traffic, because we're gonna get hundreds of them. I mean, it's just, so, so it has to be a large enough property to accommodate that. If we're gonna, if we're gonna be fair to the mobile vendors, because if we're looking at only small vehicles, it's not gonna do as good as if we have an available, uh, like truck, truck.
And this is what gets me, that church property. You think, I mean, I feel sometimes that we look at the select instead of the overall, the many. And if you were to put a food truck port there, now we're stopping progress because maybe one or two people walk in because they happen to live there. I get it. But now we're just gonna sit there because we don't want to do what's right for those two. And I, I try not to be like, like, when I make a decision, I really think about it, I think what's best for the overall picture, it's just common sense. And if it's the same person coming in and coming in and putting pressure on me, I'll tell them straight to their face, I'm sorry, and, you know? I, I'm looking at the bigger picture. So that is a great ideal spot next to trailways.
I think it is too. I mean, I like, I like the location, and I've, and I've said that.
The size is perfect, uh, the layout is perfect, I mean, maybe again, I mean, there's a lot of positives that you can come from it. There's plenty of area for parking. It may cause a few people that might be happy about it, but if you structure it right, it's also gonna screw the way that it looks. Fifty a lot doesn't look good.
We're also kinda straying away from the actual history.
Okay, so one more question. I'll put it on the agenda one day. Like this particular dog, she comes out of out of, she comes once a month. She, uh, contains her own water, she has her own generator, she doesn't spill any, that she takes her own water, she catches her own water, it's supposed to be, I guess, a pelvis. What would that be for fees?
If she's coming one time out of the month, it's seventy-five dollars.
And twice, then it has to be two, two.
It's seventy-five per day.
Okay, and that one, I think you know who, I can't remember his name. It goes out to the, you know, the, now what is he, a pet?
He pays, he has a, he does a seasonal, um, the seasonal pass, which is the... I believe that there, it's three hundred. I don't have it on here, but I, let me see, give me one second.
Not sure if it paid or what it is.
It's a seasonal, um, for snow cones and, and fruits. I don't have it on here, but I believe it's, it's two hundred dollars for it.
And that's, is that just once a year?
A month.
A month.
We report peddlers in the future if they're just consistently in the neighborhood, and you ask them for a permit and they don't have one, who do we report that to?
Please, pardon, the PD. And now we've got a batch that we're issuing to them. So if they come in here to pull a permit with us, everybody will have a city batch that says they've got a permit from us with an expiration date. And if they come by your house and they don't have it, they're, just call and report them.
Somebody was at my house today.
Oh, yeah? We have, so we have one company that's in town right now, it's Freedom Solar. Um, that they're, they're outdoor-to-door, they do have permits for it, they, but they should be having their batch on them.
And showing the batch.
Mm-hmm, and it's a city batch with their picture on it, and it has an expiration date.
What about ScanCall?
ScanCall?
We don't have the recent.
Oh, my gosh, I wish we could.
Who puts his badge on the, do you consider?
Okay.
Thanks, lady.
Alrighty. Okay, you're welcome.
Good information.
Alright.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we're going to go into executive section. Under Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, real estate, 551.074, personnel issues, and 551.087, economic development. And it is six fifty-one PM. personnel issues, and 551.087, economic development. And it is six fifty-one P.M.
Open session and it is 8:05 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session?
Alright, I'd like to make the motion to continue negotiations with the seller land with the county. Authorized to renegotiate the land.
City manager and or designated.
City manager or designated.
Have a motion from Councilman Carrasco and Secretary of State from Councilman Arona to have our city manager or designated continue negotiations for the property for the Veterans Museum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Items for our next city council meeting. I've got the fees scheduled, ARAMED. And then I would like to get an update from the chamber since they're dissolving, how they're doing financially reimbursing hot tax. I'd also like to hear from Brecken and Ariana on our meeting.
Thank you. All that money we're giving.
No, that we're not giving.
And we will also have on there the contract for the Section H for all.
Okay.
For that approval as well as the Mission Zero that they talked about.
Revised handbook or policy for the benefit stuff, retirement benefit stuff also please.
We can talk in executive session or just in an email about reviewing Cyclone contract. Reviewing the Cyclone contract.
Anything else? Okay, so we are going to adjourn. It is 8:07 PM.